Good afternoon, everyone. We are in the committee of the whole meeting of April 17th. Health and school increased to L O T M A, plus Oklahoma, O A O M A. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Spawlish Nation. There's an agenda in front of the committee looking for motion to adopt the agenda moved by councillor Prior, taken by councillor Blackmore, all those in favor, opposed motion carries. So first up, we have the zoning bylaw update priorities discussion, and this is sort of dovetailed with the council priorities discussion because I think of the council priorities, digging into the things we'd like to see done with the zoning bylaw prior to the end of this term is a conversation that the council wanted to have. So, that mine?
Thank you, Chair. So I'm just going to introduce it. Matt Gunn, the planner, is going to talk in more detail, but essentially on the agenda is a list of components that would have to be included, in staff's opinion, in the zoning bylaw update. Council, I think at the last meeting, wanted to see it, to see if there was anything that could be prioritized to be done prior to the end of the term. And I'll pass on to Matt.
Yeah, and just for council's knowledge, staff regularly compiling items that we believe would be beneficial to update as we go through applications and processes and find issues. And they're zoning bylaws complex, there's many of these. We've been envisioning the update to the zoning bylaw following the O C P as a fairly major endeavor, and so we would love to address all of the problems of the zoning bylaw that we've identified. So this list that you have in front of you is a synopsis of all of those issues. Some of them are fairly straightforward, some of them are more complicated and require a fair level of consideration and probably engagement with the community to identify the proper path moving forward. And recognizing that there are some council interests in tackling some issues sooner rather than later, we brought this forward with the intention of identifying or having council identify if there are issues that they would like to be carved off and addressed first with the larger bulk of work being done later. And I think the reason is because, given the number of items and the complexity of some of these items, the timelines to complete the complete overhaul are going to be longer than are likely possible in the remaining term that we have with council at this time.
What timeline were you thinking about the, if we weren't worried about getting stuff done before October, September, what timelines were you looking at for the new rate loss?
I think, I think our general estimate would be mid-2019 or finish.
Sure, it's a year from now.
A year, yeah. It's quite a long list, as you can see, and some of it would require public engagement, so that also always adds a good chunk of time.
And that's a long time to do, to sort of accumulate things that need to be changed, so if, maybe we'll tap that conversation. Keep that.
Yeah, and we haven't prepared a presentation for today, but what we did do is, staff have taken the list of items, we've tried to identify what staff see as some of the higher priority items, and that might be useful for council's consideration of if there are items that they want to move forward sooner rather than later. But with these items, what we don't have here yet is a real analysis of how long each of these items will take, and these items vary in how engaged the public may be in response to proposed changes. Some of them may generate a high level of engagement and concern and consideration, and some of them will have a much lower level of concern and consideration. And that's probably, if we discuss some of these items and identify some that council are interested in potentially addressing earlier, we might be able to talk a little bit about that level of engagement these generate, which can affect the likelihood of being able to address them within, you know, the coming six months.
So did you want to go over these, just go over these?
Sure. Maybe the high, rather than moderates and lows. Okay, so alignment with O C P, there's a number of, there's a number of issues that are contained within this piece itself. We have, we have historical zoning that doesn't relate, doesn't reflect the intended land uses that the O C P has identified, and so one of the possibilities is that we could make changes to zoning, to go in and change zoning to reflect O C P land use designations. There's also some, some interest or some discussion at the staff level regarding changes to zoning to reflect the future residential neighborhood use or zones that we see be becoming residential in the community but probably aren't appropriate to do at this time. And in those, with those zones, there's some talk around whether we would want to use some kind of holding zone, or if we'd want to consider a lower density zone with some kind of density bonusing option. That becomes much more complex to try and address at this time. But that's one option. And then there are some zone, there's some zoning that reflects development opportunities right now, where we are interested in potentially doing subarea planning that is identified in the O C P, and there's a, there is an interest in contemplating how we might be able to address the need for subarea planning for these areas, given that they have existing zoning. And so some of these issues are going to be quite challenging to deal with, and there could be high level of public engagement on some of these. And we haven't spent the time, we've just haven't come close to the end of the O C P process, we haven't dealt deep into this issue to identify all the properties and what the process would be, but it is one fairly significant project.
Do you have a specific, it was all kind of a big, do you have a specific thing?
Yeah. Flip the map.
Let's suppose that you're writing a really important email to a colleague.
Good to know what you're, that's on YouTube.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, so.
I'd have been worse.
I don't know why, I don't want to know a piss of that.
Yeah. So, okay, so some of them, and some of these.
And so you're not talking master plans?
No.
You're talking?
No. And to be honest, we haven't dealt into all the properties yet, we've just actually started G I S analysis to do, you know, here's all the land use designations that we have, here are the zones that are currently encompassed in those land use designations, and here are where they don't match. And some of them relate to zones that we don't have yet. So for example, we need to develop new zones for conservation lands, marine conservation, marine mixed use, marina.
Those down here, yeah.
Yeah, transportation infrastructure, agriculture, watershed, wellhead protection. So we need to create some new zones, then we'd want to rezone properties to match those zones, and those zones reflect the land use designations. So that's one suite of those items with the subarea planning. And I don't know if we want to talk about.
I don't. Good for you.
Okay.
Yeah, there are a number of areas where the O C P and zoning bylaw don't line up, and the zoning bylaw would actually allow us for developments. And so if we don't move on aligning the two, then it's very likely that we'll see those properties developed in misalignment with the O C P. So Finch area, like the Loggers, Loggers Lane, Finch, Robin Drive, you know, all those properties are zoned single-family R S one. And there's definitely interest from the neighborhood there in developing it, or from the landowners in developing it to that effect, where we think, you know, we really need to subarea plan to see what's the, what is the optimal neighborhood development. And it's not the only area that is in that situation. Crumpet, the area around Crumpet is the same, it's zoned residential.
Yeah, so here's an example, we have a pretty vast.
So we want to resell those guys?
Well, there's, we would like to be able to do some subarea planning there, and one of the questions we have is, you know, how are we going to incentivize doing subarea planning in this area? Because at current, it could come in as single-family development applications through subdivision right now as it stands. And so this question is there, is there an interest in looking for a strategy to try and find a way to incentivize doing some subarea planning?
But I'm trying to understand the misalignment with the O C P. The O C P says residential is a lot.
Yeah, that, that one is alignment with policy in the O C P, so that's aligning with policies where we want to have.
Policy and actual specifics.
Yeah, we want to have subarea planning for that area.
You've seen some preliminary subdivision applications in here for all single families. And if it comes in as A O, it gets approved with the zoning in place, that's the problem. Similarly on the R S one, if someone wants to do an R S one subdivision, there's something to advise. I don't know if that's what we want to.
Ted?
Yeah, I remember when that one subdivision went in on one of those two acre lots there, probably the one that's got the little square on it, I'm not sure. But, you know, a lot of the neighbors at the time, we had the public information meetings and that were opposing change to their neighborhood. One of my concerns was all of those streams going through there and potential agricultural land. And then, so that was kind of discarded a bit because, you know, we had the application in front of us for six lots on a two acre one, I think, six or eight. Then we met with the people that talked about the agricultural land reserves, and they said to us, start trying to get your agricultural land back again. I thought, immediately thought of that area. And so I know there is a few people in that area that are looking at six houses per lot again. So I do think that master plan for that area could have some different kind of connector trails, for example, to the rec center, protecting the habitat. But it's hard to sell somebody they've had that land all the time and then all of a sudden going like, whoop, no, brings anything from master plan next year.
Totally. And so these are, this is a really challenging topic, to be honest. It's essentially, you know, we're trying to identify if there's a way that we could give ourselves a chance to, to address these in a cohesive and thought-out fashion and put some zoning in place that gives us that time to do that.
And one option would be a holding zone, which is, which essentially would allow what's happening there now, but not any increase in density or activity until we come up with a subarea plan. And it may, again, I think we've had this discussion before, it might facilitate some of those landowners putting the funds together to do a subarea plan.
So we are talking subarea planning?
Yeah, for some, for some of them, yeah, but not for all of them.
Okay, so on the, this particular slide here, this part of the map, so, I mean, we have the rural residential, so, I mean, if somebody comes to us, the R L one, if they come to us, they have to go through a resolved process, right?
Yes, that one.
And then the R S one, I mean, would it be fair to say, though, that it's still quite a long ways off as far as, I mean, there's no water line up there, I don't think. I mean, everybody's running off wells in Finch area, aren't they?
And it's mostly up on the bench, too, just big lot, yeah.
It's getting, it's getting pre-serviced.
Yeah, it is getting serviced right now.
As part of the May course, there was a commitment to provide some servicing there. We have seen a preliminary subdivision application for single-family.
Oh, there's been one on the books for years. There's one there 10 years ago.
And our, our growth management boundary, where, where is that?
It encompasses that area.
It's in that area?
Yeah.
And then what about the Crumpet Woods one?
It encompasses that area.
The entire?
Yeah. Yeah, not that entire R S one zone area.
It's future residential, no, isn't it?
No, that, that one, because of its zoning, it was encompassed and it was, it's not future residential, it's residential neighborhood.
But identified as a subarea planning.
It's identified as a subarea planning area. It was, that's a complicated one because it has this existing zoning, but there, but we do have this desire to, to do some planning in that area. Otherwise, it could be a giant single-family neighborhood, and, you know, we could have, we could have put it outside the growth management boundary, but it doesn't really make sense, given that it has the zoning already.
Ted, I mean.
Yeah, I was just, Jason actually hit the point because that one on Finch Drive, we had to rezone because it subdivided, had to be rezoned, so we had a chance to make a decision, yes or no, on that. So that particular area, because of the rural, the R L zone, I think is probably safe subject to council decisions. Some people can't just walk in for subdivision.
Yeah, but there is R S one.
It's the surrounding area, and so, and also the adjacent, one that's adjacent to Crumpet Woods. And it's more a discussion, I think, of priorities on subarea plans, and I would guess that that's probably one of the, considering that it isn't developed and it can be developed, if you compare that to, for example, the North Yards, which is pretty much already developed in some form, maybe not the final form, you know, it might be that that's more important to capture that before you do get these things. And so why wouldn't we, as part of our growth management strategy, just put a pause on new applications coming in for those properties and say, look, this is our timetable for a subarea plan, we're not going to do anything until that time. Separate from all the O C P discussions, just we've identified this as a priority area for a subarea plan, and we just don't want things kind of jumping ahead of that. Is there a problem with that, doing that?
Yeah, so I think that's, in part, that is the thought of this, this alignment with the O C P, to put a different zoning on there, because at the moment, because it has the R S one zoning, it's not a discretionary application that could come forward for these R S one areas, they could just be subdivision applications. So it is essentially looking for a strategy to put a pause on so that we can catch up with some of these elements. And I just want, I do want to highlight that we're, we're talking about two of the kind of lack of alignment between O C P policy and land use designations and zoning. This item is intended to reflect the need to spend some time doing some analysis across the whole community to find out where there are these gaps, because so far, we've been working hard to get our O C P done, but we haven't had the time to really go down to that zoning level and make sure that we know where all of the gaps are and if there are other issues like this around the community. Now, they're not going to be on the scale of some of the things we're just talking about, but there are probably some other areas of misalignment that we'd like to spend some time so that we know if there are other pieces we want to address.
Just to follow up on that, if it's already zoned R S one, and we say we want to pause development in that area, can we pause subdivision? Because what we don't want, or at least not without consideration, is just a sprawl of R S one. So that's the thing we want to stop until we can impose something else in that area. Is that possible, to do that?
I don't, I don't think so. Not, the only way to do this is for zoning.
We'd have to downzone it, or zone it somehow.
Yes. There are, the tools that we do have are very temporary in nature. We've used the tools, you know, that give us 90 days before, but that really relates to building issuance, building permits. So this will take a little more time.
Thanks. So I hear what councillor Race is saying, but there, that comes with all sorts of unintended consequences, huge consequences for property owners in the area that already have the R S one zoning, who only want to do R S one zoning. It will prevent any additions to their houses, it will prevent laneway houses from going in, because we won't be able to take in applications, because what if that's not the intention? Whatever gets built now will be lasting an incredibly long time, it may not fit any neighborhood planning, and Matt, you put it really succinctly, is those miscommunications between our zoning and our O C P. We have our O C P, which gives direction in a really solid way of where we want our neighborhoods to go. We have walkable commercial preserving our green spaces, all of these.
Just reminder, sorry, I'm just, reminder that we have the third reading of the O C P tonight, so don't go too far down the O C P conversation, just, I just wanted to get a little closer.
Okay, I'm fine about our past O C P.
Yeah, okay, good, good. Sorry.
But.
I'm sorry. I just didn't want you to go down the O C P.
I just don't want to be. Regardless of that, I totally agree about neighborhood plans. I wonder, you know, I think that if it's done properly and you bring the neighborhood in, it can't be us imposing, we want to do this to your neighborhood, do you like it or not? If you actually include the neighborhood and have a solid neighborhood plan and do it really well with inviting the public in to listen, and then give the neighborhood what they want in their neighborhood, and include values that we have, and that we want in other neighborhoods, and have been implemented in other neighborhoods successfully. I don't know if we've done that yet. So I'm excited to have neighborhood planning, so that we can actually have maybe that area of the employment zoning has been rezoned residential, maybe we can actually put some employment zoning back in the area, so that we can have walkable neighborhood there. Right now, we're building car neighborhoods. We still have to define missing middle, because if that's what you want in that area, and you just want to pop up all sorts of different type of housing, it's going to be incredibly difficult to find value in a neighborhood plan when you're just dumping in more town houses and residential. So, yep, like, right now, it's single-family housing, there can be laneway houses, there can be increased density, there can be rental units. Flood construction level in this area is a big concern as well, so anything that changes has to include flood construction level, because that whole area is a floodway, and Brendan Park was brought in as well, so I wonder how that plays into that. So there's a lot of considerations, and it seems like you have thought about most of these things and those ways that integrate, but I'm worried about pausing development or, I don't mind getting applications, it's only R S one now. There's nothing wrong with getting an application, maybe it's something fantastic.
Not even R S one.
Or, yeah, exactly. So getting any zoning applications.
I think, you're talking about log isn't an entire R L one.
R L one, so it's.
I think the point, sorry.
All right, R S one, it's both.
That's the, on the bench?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's a bash.
Yeah, do you want to respond to that, Karen?
We're trying to create the space to be able to do that. If you don't, you potentially risk just getting a single-family subdivision, and the application won't come to council. It just, it will go through a subdivision process, it will get approved, and you won't get anything other than single-family house. That's the concern, that's not where we're, where the O C P wants this neighborhood to go. If we don't give that space, that process room to breathe, what you'll get is what current zoning allows, retention, that's the concern.
So maybe a question to staff, we're not going to answer all these today, but we want to get down to all this, that yes, we want to prioritize this, 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 and have a bylaw back in front of council in subject, something like that.
Yeah, so I could continue on.
So I, I just wanted to give council an example of what you meant by this.
Totally.
And it almost sounds like you mean a subarea plan.
Um, sorry.
A comprehensive approach to alignment with the O C P, and that's how you basically lay on a subarea plan.
The alignment with the O C P would be just identifying places where, there are a couple of things. One is identifying places where we have zones that don't match the land use designations, and it may not be this issue, other things, and looking at correcting those. Another item is trying to find places where, like this, we, we think that development may occur beyond what we're looking for, and changing the zoning to pause so that we can do those subarea plans.
I have Karen and Ted and Jason still on my list here, but I don't want to get too much of ourselves in terms of, not to here to discuss these things, you're here to set the priorities, go back to council.
I guess my question was, so that first one, I thought in my mind, it sounds like it takes a longer time, requires engagement, is a pretty thoughtful process. So then I went to the next one, which is the missing middle, and you stay in there amending residential zones to encourage your mandate for greater variety of housing. So I wondered if actually that is a faster route to try and protect some of these areas while you do that, that longer-term work, so that we just change the R S one zoning, so that you actually can't bring forward just, say, the family lots, you have to include a greater variety of homes in an R S one subdivision. And I wondered if that was just, while still allowing for proposals, we are trying to protect some of that space, and if that was a faster way to do it.
Can I respond to that? It may be, although, to be honest, so this is really a preliminary list of issues we've identified and starting to think about what the solutions may be, but, you know, I think with the missing middle, that's going to require a bunch of thought. We don't have an answer as to how we're going to incentivize or mandate that to occur in what are currently R S one zones. And it may be that the solution that comes out of that could address some of those issues of the alignment, but it may also not be, like, one of the possibilities is we may want to switch areas to a form-based code. When you read about missing middle, that's often one of the items that is suggested, but that's a major project to change from, you know, our current zoning strategy to using form-based code. We, always going to require outside expertise, not necessarily a simple process either. So, yeah, there's some questions to answer there, that I don't know if the, if that missing middle is going to address that alignment with O C P piece, and certainly in the short term.
Yeah, I think we have.
Might help.
If I may add to what Matt said, the other component of, of going with the first option is, in some of these areas, we might be looking for employment space as well. So just because it's zoned residential doesn't mean that, you know, the, the best use of the area from the community perspective is residential, there may be a mix, a mixture of uses in some of these areas, particularly in this one.
Can I just ask a follow-up? Is it possible to mandate in residential zones that people have to be within a 15-minute walk of a commercial hub?
Probably not, probably after that's.
10 minutes.
10 minutes, I don't know, I just picked a number.
Why?
I was just thinking about our sacred to school and.
Yeah. I think we, if we wanted to achieve that, we might have to do some more, I don't know that we could create a zone that, that has that requirement, I think we might have to choose areas that would be employment to create that network. I think that would be like identifying neighborhood nodes, but I think we'd have to go and say, well, we have a node here, and here, and here, and that gives us 10 minutes to, to all the different residential areas. Because then, under what you're saying, the, the employment would have to be everywhere before things were developed in new areas, and so that could lead to kind of a complicated, you know, chicken and egg scenario for development.
I was just wondering from large landowners if that's, if that's in the zoning, so you pick a certain land size and say, as you consider this, you have to know that R S one zoning requires all residents to be within a 10-minute walk of, of commercial. And so in effect, you are doing subarea planning, but without that timeline, in a small way. I mean, you still have to do it. I'm not trying to say we don't need to do that work in the first one, I'm just trying to find creative ways to make those adjustments in the short term while we do subarea planning. That's all.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that one, and it would, it would require some consideration.
I have Ted, Jason, Susan. Do you want us to?
Yeah, of course.
We hear the priorities, yes, it's high, let's go ahead and do them.
I like the pause. I'd like to find the few areas that are in planning department's mind like this, where we may miss opportunities to have a nicer neighborhood, because we're not addressing them and pause them so that we can address them. You know, for me, in this area, it's mostly trail networks and habitat that I think, and actually agricultural, but, but mostly trail networks, because if you're at the back end of this and you want to go to the civic centers and have a very nice little neighborhood, windy kind of trail through, and I just think we're missing that if we don't do the neighborhood plans. So pause till we can get a neighborhood plan.
And I think, for me, Ted hits on, like, the mix of housing and stuff, we can, we can work on that, but Ted hits on a really important point. We see it in Dentville with these big lots and just, you know, they're just building on this lot, there's no continuity between the areas. We're seeing it in North Yards with the Breeze and the one beside it, there's no continuity side. In Brackendale with the single-family home development, there's no continuity with the next door, next, the neighboring big lots. We can see it in this area for sure with all these two acre lots. So how to connect from a trail point, particularly from a walking pedestrian point of view, I think, for me, that we have to somehow get that in there as soon as possible before these areas come back with 10 separate development applications for all the little pieces without any comprehensive connectivity. The mix of housing and that type of thing, I think will come as we develop missing middle policies and blah, 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 but, so I just, I don't know, I just didn't want to lose sight of what Ted was saying, that how do we make sure all these neighborhoods with these bigger lots that are being zoned R M one, two, or even R S three to connect? Thanks, Ted. Jason?
Yeah, my remark specifically related to the R S one zone on this portion of the map, as well as the Crumpet Woods, is that clearly, especially given the size of the Crumpet Woods lot, you're going to want, I'm pretty sure we're going to want some sort of connectivity to the north, because if we have all of that filtering out through Valley Cliff, that could be very problematic, and then also. And then also the active transportation that everybody else was mentioning. And then the only other thing, though, I would think about as far as RL1 and maybe council needs to consider this in the community is that, you know, there may be an argument for the existing RL1 to maybe we say that we are going to keep it as RL1 and we're not going to entertain zoning because there is some utility in some of that zoning. It allows for flexibility for uses that really are hard to place in any other part of the community. So, you know, recognizing, of course, our desire to intensify development within our existing footprint, you know, maybe we can carve that one out and just say, and then also be very clear about it so that there is no speculation on these properties and landowners aren't acquiring them with the expectation to put up condos or whatever else. You know, that's also something to be considered and I think would be part of the whole conversation. So, I support these as very high priority areas to have.
Susan, can I try to move on?
My only question is really about the, yeah, moving on, there's a ton in here, we're getting stuck in this one little neighborhood on this entire zoning bylaw. And my only comment, and it may be about all of these zoning bylaws, is if we are no longer desiring single-family homes and if that's some sort of decision we came to, that there's going to be no single-family homes and that we're going to prevent zoning of single-family homes. And what if, in the neighborhood plan, that neighborhood comes back and says, no, we want single-family homes? That's right now what I'm hearing and regardless of how I feel about it, if the public in that neighborhood wants single-family homes and the public in the neighborhood in general, this sounds like we're telling them, this is going to go in your neighborhood, do you like it? And that is not going to go over well and that's generally the opposition we've been getting is, instead of going out to the public and asking, we have this large discussion, decide what we want and then go to the public. We need to do it the other way around.
At this point, we're not even supposed to be discussing what we want.
Right.
We're just discussing that we want something done.
Okay, can I add something else?
So, I just wanted, I saw Jonas put his hand up quickly. And I don't think we're saying no to single-family homes.
No, not at all. We're just, we do have policies in our current OSB and we will have in the new OSB to talk about diversity of housing neighborhoods. So, in this case, this would be, you know, a single-family neighborhood. And I think, if anything, we're looking for something more than just a single-family, a diversity, not saying that this should go all condos or townhouses.
Excellent, thank you.
I think that's where the conversation Karen was bringing in, like, can missing middle policies help to inform that so we get first-hand in that form?
In some cases, yeah, in some cases they can, and I think, but it's also important to consider the employment opportunities and other things like trail connectivity.
Yeah, absolutely. Susan, you have anything?
Yeah, so with single-family homes and laneway homes, you know, I look on my lot where I have a senior living in the front house that we've accommodated by using Airbnb in the back so that we can accommodate a multitude of seniors in the front. So, single-family homes, we tend to think of them as one-use, but they can be multiple uses and they can have a lot of density and you can have employment in the neighborhood. It's just in Tennessee, they allow you to use the frontier house as a commercial business and there's all these really tiny homes with residences in the back and commercial spaces and it fits perfectly in neighborhoods. It's really interesting just to see differences. Is it possible?
Yeah, we're going to move on. Yeah, interestingly, Matt and I were in a session yesterday in New York or Toronto. There's, in Vancouver, you see it a lot where you just have a neighborhood and then there's a house and downstairs is the variety store or the food and store and upstairs is an apartment. Happens all over the place and we don't have any allowance of that type of zoning. Actually came up in a session that Matt and I were in yesterday. How do we encourage, and just particularly for sort of the neighborhood convenience store or neighborhood coffee shop or a small little restaurant or something and that type of thing. So, it was an interesting conversation we had about how do you facilitate that. But, so we're getting in the weeds again, so I think generally, it sounds like council wants to create the alignment with the OCPs, but there's a ton of work in that.
There's a ton of work in that.
And essentially, you're saying sub-area plans. But in the meantime, if we can make sure that from every neighborhood we figure out connectivity, even if we haven't figured out the entire sub-area plan, that we make sure where every decision has the connectivity in mind. I don't know if we just connectivity plans in all these areas first, just to get that baseline there and not get too bogged down. I'm sort of throwing out ideas to the council to think about, but that seems to be the big thing, issue that comes up. Dentville is very prominent. Matt?
And perhaps in that alignment with OCP, we can spend some time figuring out what needs to be done right now versus what maybe would take longer to do and trying to parse that out. And we haven't done that at this point because we haven't spent the time to sort through all this and get that tool identified, but we could perhaps come back, go to council and say, here are the things that we think need to be done now to preserve some of those opportunities.
I'm just going to go to Jason and then we're going to go through this just a bit more quickly.
Yeah. Just wanted to say one last thing that I think sometimes we overlook when we have these kinds of discussions is duplex zoning. That is actually, I think, something that, you know, has a lot of benefits in terms of, you know, the comments that we get around single-family home zoning is that it's easier for smaller builders to be involved and, you know, kind of do a couple here and there. Duplex achieves some of those objectives and would still allow for that as opposed to...
Want to do sleep?
So, wanted us not to forget that. And we have an existing test case in Bracken Dell, which I think, my opinion, works pretty well.
Yeah. That's what I was going to say. Okay, so missing middle, I think this is based on past conversations, is something that council wants us to get some policy and encouragement in. Everyone's okay with that as a high priority? Yeah. Employment space, do you want to?
Yeah, so there's a few items in there. One of them is in our business park, one of the things we heard a bunch through the OCP process and their, you know, communication with the community is that there are certain businesses that have a hard time finding places to go and the business park hasn't been great for accommodating some of those because the value of the land has been affected by commercialization of what is industrial areas. And so, one of the ideas is, one of the concepts is to go in there and to look at finding areas of the business park that could be specified for true light industrial and remove the commercialized aspect that tends to make it harder for some of the dirtier, messier businesses that can't, yeah, have trouble finding spaces to work. Another one is looking and seeing if there's opportunities for incentivizing or mandating a higher proportion of commercial space in mixed-use developments. And we've done a bunch of work on what to do with C4 and there's interest in looking and seeing if there are opportunities in other parts of the community in other zones to increase or requirements for commercial space. And then another one coming out of the OCP is clarifying and differentiating light industrial, medium industrial and heavy industrial and ensuring that the permitted uses reflect, on different zones, reflect those different uses.
So, is this a priority for council? I have Ted, Jason, Susan.
I'm basically okay. I do have a question about, like, we're incentivizing all this office, you know, in residential developments and I don't want to see the day come where all of a sudden we have all this empty office space because we've been incentivizing offices and builders are building it reluctantly now. And I know that we did all our numbers on how much we need, but I think we should have some quick little review of how we determine how much commercial space required in our town because, you know, being a town that commutes, I don't know if it was really thoroughly looked at. So, I just have a little bit of worry when I see all these developments going in, particularly in the downtown with all the second-floor offices going in and the ground-floor offices and I'm going like, I just want to pay attention to that.
Jason?
I agree with the intentions of this idea, but I'm questioning whether or not it might be too late for us to be doing that with the business park. And given that it is a fairly small area, I mean, I would maybe try and condense it more into looking at retail and really clamping down on that, but commercial, like, when we're talking about, like, you know, a brew pub with onsite production and stuff like that.
Next floor.
Yeah, like, I don't really think we should try and restrict that. I'm wondering if there might be other lands within the district that might be suitable for these other sort of industrial uses that maybe we could move on a little bit. I don't know if there is, I mean, obviously in the Chikai Fan, there's some issues there or whatever, but, you know, we have had some discussion about, well, is there, depending on the intensity of the use, maybe there is availability of lands there for certain types of activities or in other areas. I just, I'm concerned that, I don't know, I mean, if we really get down to the parcel level, like, that's practically what we would almost be doing and that might not be very good given the fact that it's already hard enough to put a lot of these uses, you know, like, whether it's like a oil loom shop or something like that. We saw how difficult that was when it went into like sort of a non-business park area. So, I'm just wondering what the impact would be. I'm a little bit more cooler on this particular priority.
And it's got lots of different things in there too. Like, it's light industrial, it's the mixed-use developments that Ted was talking about. It's a big, it's a big area. There's lots of stuff in that one. Susan, and David?
Thanks. Yeah, I would agree with Jason on that side. Restricting employment, you have to let employment happen how it's happening and the employment, that is the employment that we're getting, this is commercial use. We're getting craft, beverage. I think that the problem is, is that the buildings that are going up in that area don't allow for anything else. You're basically having pop-up cement buildings on land that was bought relatively cheaply for the market. Not many people need space like that. So, it's the stuff that we zoned and allowed to be built attracted that sort of use and it's made a great economy of craft beverages in that area. There's 13 in one year and that's incredible. So, but in the meantime, small businesses can't heat double-decker, you know, you want to encourage small business and medium-sized businesses, hoping for a large industrial use? I don't know if that's, I know that we need industrial land. I think we'd better to work out deals with BC Rail properties to keep large industrial use and let the business park grow. We're putting residential next to it. And I think that when you're in those sort of areas, you have to expect, you know, I don't mind like oil looms shops going in or mechanic shops going in and I don't think, I think the land is affected just because of everything else that's going on. It's not really because of the employment that's going in there, but when employment land becomes desirable, the price goes up like everything else. It's not, it's not pure industrial dirty land anymore. And in Vancouver, there's, those sort of shops all the way through their industrial area is co-working spaces, breweries and industrial use altogether and theaters. And like, it's amazing how people work together when the zoning's opened up to allow employment.
So, I think we established, I think, so, but I've still got Doug and Karen on the list here, but on this one, it sounds like it's something that's of interest to people and we want to figure out how to find it. We want to minimize retail. We want to actually facilitate some of the stuff Susan was talking about. And currently, our zoning's problematic in that area. So, even private. So, I think it sounds like we want to do something here and we just have to actually define it. I also do think there's an important piece to actually making sure that we're not minimizing the opportunity for those medium to heavy industrial uses and we got to figure out where those can be and how they integrate with the rest of the business park slash... Doug, then Karen.
Yeah, I did, we had a discussion about this one night in council about, and I can't remember what the issue was, but I remember making the comment that maybe we should try and move sort of the light industrial down to the south and have the north end more of the commercial because it's closer to residential. I don't think anybody agreed with me, but, so I'm not, I tend to agree with Jason at this point. A lot of the cat is out of the bag with respect to this commercial light industrial and I think we can just sort of accept that. The one that jumps out at me is this medium industrial. And the first time I saw that used was in the employment land strategy and it applies to just a description, but we don't really have a zone for that. And I think that might be helpful to pick areas which are probably not within, or at least not to the east of Queensway, that might be considered as medium industrial. In other words, could accommodate a more noisier or something business, more traffic, more sort of a not light industrial, not the light commercial use. And over in the BC Rail lands is an obvious spot for it where you've got small sawmills and things like that and possibly up in the airport area. But to define that, and then I guess the other question that popped into my mind is taxation. There's a category for light industrial, there's a category for heavy industrial, and there's no category for medium industrial for assessments. If we had a medium industrial category, I guess as a BC assessment would decide whether it goes into class, whatever it is, four or six or whichever one or two. They would just allocate it, but our zoning would set the location sort of things. And I think that, for me, is more of a priority because I think the business park is kind of going the way, you know, we created mud zones as transitions and stuff like that and I think it's sort of resolving itself. But there are some big pieces of property on the other side of Queensway backing onto the tracks which might be more suitable for something that's kind of a medium industrial type like the stone works there and so forth. So, that, to me, is more the priority because a lot of those are basically undeveloped.
Yeah, I was going to say, the three things in that box, the priority for me in the short term is the third one, which is to clarify different, you have the light, medium and heavy. I too think that east of Queensway near the tracks is a place to reserve for heavy industry, west. Thank you.
Yeah. That medium industry.
Yeah, that medium. And I actually think it wouldn't hurt to protect some of that area's light industrial if non-commercial because I think that would help keep prices lower and allow certain types of businesses to live in there that might not otherwise. I think with the mud zones and the fact, the way that the northern part of the business park is developing creates a lot of different opportunities for a mixed use of commercial and light industrial, but, you know, I think there's an opportunity to, anyway, define those better and maybe look at protecting some of that land for non-commercial uses. So, my priority is the third.
Just one thing on that topic. The, I think one of the issues that has driven some of these problems in the commercial, in the business park and this item being in the list is that our light industrial zone does have a lot of commercial aspects to it. And so, I think what I'm hearing from councils that there's, you know, this is allowing a mix of uses to occur in these areas and that can be really good. But one thing, I think, from a planning perspective is we do want to hang on to somewhere for those actual light industrial uses that are maybe messy, don't have as much of a commercial aspect. And because we don't have a zone that is specific to them, a lot of the zones are becoming more expensive and our, we don't have homes. We continue to hear from light industrial users, there's nowhere for me to go. And so, this is, the idea here is to actually make that zone, you know, maybe the business park allows this mix of uses, craft, beverages, all that, but we do need to find somewhere and hold it to that use so that these people have a place to run their businesses because they can't compete with the craft.
So, I don't want to, I want to move on. So, I think it sounds like we're not on the same page about, but we do think that some clarity and it's sounding like a bit of a sub-area plan for them. But generally, I'm hearing there's interest. It may not be as deep as what you've got here, but we want to do some clarification. Is that fair enough, everybody? Yeah, okay. Can we move on, new zones?
Yep, these are basically a bunch of zones that reflects some of our new land use designations that we want to apply. So, lands that we want to conserve for conservation value, like to have a zone to apply to that.
I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if one zone we want to contemplate is a rental accommodation zone.
Sure.
Based on some of the stuff that progress is now allowing, that we actually actually own rental without having covenants and blah, blah, blah.
Purpose though.
Purpose though rental.
Not short-term.
No.
Can we do that?
Long-term.
I don't think that's such a solution yet.
When it is?
Yeah. You betcha.
Definitely.
Yeah, thanks. I was just curious, when you talk about create a zone, are you talking about the text or are you talking about actually attaching it to a piece of land?
To create the text, the new zone and to attach it to a piece of land. For example, there's resource zoning that's applied to a bunch of areas that are in our new, our conservation land use designation and so we're thinking it would be appropriate to have a zone that's based on conservation rather than resource use, which permits a fairly wide variety of uses.
Yeah, I mean, I focused on the marine zones and we have a strategy underway right now, as you're aware. And I thought that actually the zoning... right now, as you're aware. Um, and I thought that, that actually the zoning is going to be, for those specific parcels in the blind channel, for example, will be decided almost on a parcel-by-parcel basis as the developments of the uplands, lands, the Jason upland lands come along. Um, and we'd be able to kind of decide yes or no for each one of those zones. So, uh, for me, it's a priority, creating the text. Um, and I think the development, particularly in that area, with those types of zones, will probably follow the upland lands as they come on, application by application. Um, the only other comment I would add is just to include provision or criteria around livable boards. And, and there are other examples where they are permitted, not just houseboats, but also on boats, uh, and some of the requirements around that. Grand allowance, for example.
Anyone else on, on that type?
Well, just to that point, you know, if we don't have the conversation about these things and rely on a parcel coming forward and then saying no, because we haven't had the discussion about where fuel dock is going to go, or where um, marina's going to go, or where mixed use is going to go. I mean, I, I do think we need to have that discussion and pick those areas. Otherwise, development comes in and it's, it's kind of like, where does the tower go? It's too late, it's already going. So, anyway, so along those notes, you know, well, the waterfront, for sure. I think, I really do think, you know, it wouldn't have to be a huge discussion, but you know, the road ads, for example, would be a good spot for something. And, but just to get some kind of basic plan on that. And I think our marine strategy is missing that at this point, because we're not going to get that far into our marine strategy.
Um, something else I thought would be worthwhile, council thinking about. I was at a conference a couple weeks ago, we were talking about um, the housing being a human right. And how do we ensure that it doesn't matter if it's a social housing project, or homeless shelter, or whatever, that it's housing, it should be allowed to go in residential zone areas. And so simply make it an allowable use within residential zones, period. And kind of take a more human rights approach to how, um, to those types of um, issues. And, and, and just to be very blunt, it would mean that those types of things wouldn't have to have a reason in a residential area. It's housing, meets a residential code, it should be allowed. Currently, we, it's not a permissible use. So, one council.
What's that?
Could be a homeless shelter, it could be a group home, it could be, um, it could be a rehab center, it could be anything, as long as it, it's housing, then, and it's in a residential zone, it should be allowed. As opposed to disallow, is, that's how current zone does it. And basically, it says everyone, it takes a human rights approach. Everyone, everyone has a right to a home. We shouldn't be able to discriminate based on that right. Yes. They've done a lot of work on this, and I'm sure they have.
Yes.
It, B C's been active yet, but.
And I think there are certain types of housing that are already protected by provincial legislation. So, under the Community Care Facilities Act, you know, smaller group homes are, can happen anywhere where a single-family home can happen. Uh, so it would be taking that approach and maybe expanding on it in its own volume.
And it's a big conversation, for sure. Um, but it's to de-stigmatize things. There's a whole bunch of interesting reasons why you're not allowed to do that.
Well, but if you carry that along, uh, if somebody has a single-family lot, that means they can move a trailer around. Um, so, for example, um, because that's housing, somebody's living there. So, I, I think, you know, the purpose of zoning, and one of our fundamental duties, is to try to regulate land use, uh, so that there is some order and not chaos. And I think we have to be careful where you draw that line.
If you, if you're doing a multiple, like you're doing an apartment building, it has to go into our M3 zoning or whatever. We still have to go into the same grid zone.
You're talking about housing, and how do you define housing? Housing is where somebody lives. They might live in a trailer. They might live in a geodesic dome. They might live in something else. I mean, there's all kinds of different ways people can house themselves. Maybe it can be just a pop-up tent in someone's yard. And so, you know, you have to be careful where you draw that line, I think. I can understand when you're talking about putting things like, uh, we did for Helping Hands and so forth in an area.
No, I agree with you.
Um, you know, and we can have criteria around that. Uh, but I think you'd have to be careful where you extended that to.
Jason.
I'm just wondering, Doug, wouldn't it just be a matter of inserting it in the schedules for each of the, the different zones to say, you know, and you would have very specific, like, supportive housing, homeless shelter, um, whatever else. And that would still exclude things like, you know, movable trailers or, or other undesirable things? Like, I think that that's, I, I'm, I'm supportive of that. And then, I would just be interested in knowing how municipalities, in terms of, um, and even how the province intends to regulate these things, so that there is, you know, some accountability around the operators, so that there are mechanisms and standards that we may set even as a municipality, vis a vis staffing, or supervision, or whatever, right? Like, because we could say, well, supportive housing is when there is 24/7 staff support, you know, versus more independent living, and we might have. So I could see how it needs a bit of refinement to, to make sure. But I think the point is, is to not, I think, subject those types of housing arrangements to an existing, like, an additional hook, I guess. I think that is beyond what we would typically consider for um, neighborhood, uh, or planning characteristics, whether it's, you know, so density, transportation.
Karen.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. You were talking about use, not form of character.
Absolutely.
That we would allow the use, but it would still have to conform to the character of the neighborhood.
Or the.
Density.
Or what's allowed.
Yeah.
The density. Like, you couldn't put a mobile home on an RS1 lot. Because we're just talking about.
Well, housing is a very broad word.
Yeah, but I think, I didn't think, for clarity, Mary, you were talking about use.
Yes.
Not form of character.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, on that, if you were going to have a 12-room house with, you know, like a Helping Hands type thing, or a seniors assisted living house, wouldn't you want it within 10 minutes of a commercial? So when we start doing our neighborhood plans, then we can pick areas for that stuff. I mean, I agree that, with the boarding house kind of thing, I mean, I think boarding houses are becoming more abused. And yeah, I think they're great in areas close to stores. I wouldn't want to see them way out in the middle of, up the hill. And as far as the trailers on the residential, I remember we discussed that, and you can have a trailer on residential, as long as you take the wheels out from under it. It's a tiny home. You're allowed, right now.
If it's, um, yeah, if it can confront the building code and has a foundation.
Back and trailer in, for the foundation.
Yeah, oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. Um, anyway, it, it just occurred to me that we may want to add language in the zoning by law to, to write this down. Um, it's not really a new zone, but it's new use to existing zones. Anything more on the new zone conversation? Yep?
To that point, is, do we have tiny home designation yet, anywhere? Is it possible that we could do an FCL exempt tiny home regulation, where, I know FCL, I know, don't go into provincial regulations, I don't need to hear that again, but we need to have some sort of, you know, a small home zoning that could be like a layaway home that conforms, or maybe it's under 100 square feet, or.
Does, like, for example, does our modular home zoning, could you put a tiny, if you have modular home zoning, could you put tiny home community in on that?
Um, yes, I feel it. Um, we don't have.
So we maybe just need to modify our existing zoning to make sure we're adding that language for that use?
We don't really have any limits on size anymore, or, you know, homes. So any lot could have a small home on it. Um, the FCL is an issue that we haven't dealt with yet. Um, so we don't have a zone that would allow, um, tiny homes in, you know, below the flood construction level.
Like, there was a zone that allowed, you know, I'm thinking about a downtown lot in particular, or like, a smaller lot that could fit five or six small homes altogether as a community. I mean, on Finch Drive, that's what was supposed to happen, but the case of FCL, we ended up with. Big homes, not the tiny homes that we imagined. If you wanted to do that in a downtown lot, just as an example, throwing it out there, have like four tiny homes on one lot and no FCL. And then, you could have seniors within walking distance with a co-op. I mean, there's just so many more things that you could do with allowing tiny, smaller living dwellings on, on regular lots. They'd be connected to services, uh, and they wouldn't have to climb 5.75 meters in the air as a senior citizen. I just think about the seniors living downtown. I can't imagine them climbing the flood construction levels.
Um, and so we haven't dealt with that yet. It's, it's still, that's still probably the major issues in storage for, for tiny homes.
Yeah.
Um, it's something that we can look at, um, as part of this process, but it, um, I just don't have enough information to.
Yeah, can we see?
Tell you whether it's.
I'd like to know if there's an exemption for that, if we can have a, a specific zoning for tiny homes. I know the community's interested in that. Uh, and to, you know, if we could do an exemption from one type of housing and make it because of seniors housing.
Yes, yes, you can. People could do that through the flood law. The difficulty that I understand it is, a lot of these tiny homes don't need building code. That's the real. You can zone for whatever you want. You can put the building permit on, plus the building code, then.
Well, you can make them building.
We can't, that's, we can't do that.
We're not dropping in, I'm telling you, building something specific that's small on a lot that would be considered a tiny home, under something that's 500 square feet.
It's eminently possible. It's unlikely that that would get built on a lot that's that expensive. The economics.
I'm thinking about the Portland Tiny Home Hotel right now, in my head.
Yeah.
Downtown residential lot, 15 different tiny homes on it, used commercially, but didn't, doesn't have to be commercially.
I, I'm going to paraphrase, but I think council would like to see a way of at least allowing tiny homes in the municipality. People want to not spend that much on a dense lot, that's then.
And we have a factory that builds some.
Uh, Doug and Karen.
Yeah, um, and I don't completely disagree with that, but I think, um, it would be responsible to try to avoid, uh, the FCL issues and put people at risk for that. So I'd be very careful about that. But there are, having said that, there are areas in the community, um, that are about the FCL and could accommodate something like that. Uh, once again, when you do something like that, it's a little difficult sometimes to re-engineer a neighborhood for that kind of thing. But I'm thinking of places that haven't quite developed yet, like the Chikai Fans and some of the other, um, areas where you can think about that going into it. To me, it's, it's practically the same issues as a mobile home park. Uh, it's just tiny homes instead of a mobile home, but you still have to accommodate services, parking, et cetera, and all the traffic considerations and so forth. So, um, but certainly to consider something like that, if it could meet these other safety requirements, you know, why not?
Karen, second.
Um, yeah, I don't mind the intent of that, but if we're having a priorities discussion, it's not something I need to see done by the end of our term. I mean, when I look at missing middle housing and the secondary suites piece and all that sort of thing, I would prioritize those to have a tiny home zone, which I think could come in the whole zoning by law update, but it's, it's not a high priority in the structural.
Um, Ted.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're already allowed to have a tiny home. We're not allowed to have this tiny lot. But I know that, I think what Sue's referred to, and I've seen it in all sorts of, when you search the internet, looking at tiny homes, you'll see a town that's picked an area, and they've taken a single-family house, maybe four of them in a row, and they've turned them into five little houses on each lot, and all the homeless are living in there, and they're getting back, and they're getting jobs, and they're starting to feel human again. I mean, I've seen that, and yes, you know, to Doc's point, the Chikai Fan, if I remember, right, has a whole part of that subdivision is tiny homes.
In the last one.
Yeah, which is, like you said, it's a trade department. Take the wheels out. Um, I don't know who wants to buy a $700,000 downtown lot, but five tiny homes on it, but, you know, so we are allowed tiny homes. I, I don't think that's a priority by the end of the term, because I think if people want to do that, they could, could, and they could be encouraged, could be bigger developments, encouraged.
Susan.
I was thinking about tiny home zoning. I was, uh, just thinking about expanding our missing middle zoning to include tiny homes. And if we have an entire neighborhood of, uh, there's no reason why one lot could be, couldn't be all toned in tiny homes in a missing middle zoning. It's not a separate zoning, it's just opening up the zoning to allow different housing forms. Yeah. And the economics of it are actually really good. Tiny Home Hotel, Texas, Lee and Zosta, Portland, for every one.
Yeah, and we, we do have modular home, RS10 or something, I can't remember what it is. I actually think the one on Finch is on that, it's not zone RS1.
RMH1.
RMH1 or 10 or something like that. But it's, it's essentially modular home, which is ironic, because there's nothing called tons on it. But, um, anyway, so we do have zoning that sort of allows it, but I think we're looking for more enabling language, and maybe there's a piece from the missing middle that addresses tiny homes in a simple way, as a, like, get it done simply, and then maybe it's more comprehensive down the road. But, everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I'd just start with tiny homes.
University zoning.
Okay. Um, this one is a, a little more complicated, because, um, some of the items within this area probably need to be, uh, preceded by an update to the separated plan for the, um, the Sees Guy University Plan or the Quest University. Um, some of the things we would want to achieve there, establish minimum residential neighborhood at the, or densities at the neighborhood level, zone specific areas for neighborhood commercial use. Uh, yeah, most importantly, include separated plan housing form proportions in zoning, so that the separated plan has a specific proportion of single-family and multifamily, and we want to make sure that that's achieved. Um.
I think we think this, I think this is long overdue. Anyone disagree that this is, is long overdue?
Okay.
Okay.
Waste management.
Waste management. Uh, the, the biggest issue here is, um, that trying to ensure that we have good solid waste collection areas, that the, um, the bins that are, um, used in some multifamily areas are considered a problem for wildlife attractant. And, uh, so there is a desire to make sure that we have multifamily solid waste collection areas.
So, anybody disagree? Okay.
Energy efficiency, there's a kind of a suite of items related to energy efficiency. So, create density bonuses for residential energy-efficient construction, permit vehicle charging, and talk alternative energy.
You don't have to read it.
Yeah, sure.
I think, based on past council discussions, I think this is a priority.
Flood hazard regulations. Uh, this is, um, trying to clean up some of the regulations that, and, and some of the unintended consequences that are happening with our, our flood hazard regulations. Um, and, and a bit of, to kind of twist into the regulations. So we want to make sure that the, the secondary suites or the carriage homes that are built kind of match the intention. And, um, there's a, there's a bonus, a height bonus that's getting applied more broadly than was intended. Um, the habitable area definition needs some tuning, building has some challenges with that. So trying to tune that up and make sure we get, um, what we're looking for. And also kind of managing the, the scale of the, the secondary suites. There have been some concerns about, um, how some of the secondary suites that are getting built are fitting into neighborhoods.
Absolutely. Ted.
And so is that to address some of the concerns that we've been getting on? The guy next door, he's building a carriage house, and now I've lost my privacy?
Yes. Um, there's some, there's some issues with what, what we're getting in terms of size, and, and so address some of that. Uh, but, yeah, we, there's, there's always going to be implications on, you know, impacts to privacy when we have secondary suites. So it's not going to eliminate that, but trying to address some.
Can you explain the first sentence? Consider increasing garage exemption to 70 square meters for carriage houses, so the whole or floor in the floodplain can be excluded?
Uh, consider increasing garage exemption.
It sounds like you're just trying to make bigger homes.
Yeah, um, now, let me think here. That one was. I think there may be some misalignment in terms of what is excluded from, um, the, the lower floor area, in terms of what is reflected in the upper floor. Um, so it's not, it's, this is not, wouldn't be a substantive change. Um, but I don't.
So it's not, this is not, wouldn't be a substantive change, but I don't think it's aiming at reducing the size of secondary arcadios.
Just didn't understand what it meant, actually, so I was just curious.
Yeah, I'd have to go, a lot of these are, have been added by the entire staff as we go through, and I've looked up numbers that one I've gone through, but this one, I believe it's because, yeah, there's, the, there's, the garages end up having to be smaller in the downstairs than the actual upstairs, and so it creates this kind of disconnect because of how much of the garage we exempt from the GFA. I'd have to take a look at it.
So, I'm just trying to understand this too, and I'll go to Susan, Karen. 70 square meters is about 750 square foot footprint.
Yeah.
So then you have ground level 750 some odd square feet, so I have to still think about meters and feet. And then you have your second story, which would be about the same. You wouldn't have a third story necessarily, would you? Just two stories.
No, the intention is not.
Under a certain height.
Yes.
How about you're saying that the ground floor wouldn't be part of the equation for the, what the FSR.
The intention is that whatever we permit on the, on the top floor, in terms of our secondary suite size, that underneath that you can build a garage that matches that upper, so that you have.
Oh, okay.
You know, you're permitted secondary suite on the top floor, and then the bottom, you've just got garage, rather than having to do something funky to have less space in your garage or a smaller garage.
Okay. And so, this is what our footprint is allowed to be?
Yeah, it's essentially to align the top and the bottom floor.
Okay. Thanks. Karen and Doug, or no, Karen and Jason.
I thought of all of them, this would be a really quick one to do by the end of our term, wouldn't require a lot of consultation, because it's just fixing inconsistencies, and I think it's important, because I think we do wanna allow increased density for people to put carriage homes, that sort of thing. Same with the secondary suites, one that comes next is just cleaning some of that stuff up. So both of those were a high priority.
Jason.
On the last point, restrict permanent structures in areas of Chikai fan, in certain areas. Which areas are we talking about?
I think they'd be in the highest risk areas.
That include the airport?
I don't think that, the risk level comes down, I think the one and two is a higher.
Like above the landfill?
Yeah.
And like on the other side of the interstate, there's a couple of commercial nodes on the highway, for example, that, I think that's where we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have this longstanding of speed policy that says there will be no buildings in these high areas one and two, or zones one and two, so I think we're just implementing that into the zoning bylaw. It's already something that's being implemented.
And so then how does that affect, like, I'm still curious, I mean, one of the things that we've been talking about for the last, you know, four years is the airport, and are we making changes to clarify that? Because as I understand it, there is no permanent structure allowed on airport lands. Is that true?
Yeah, essentially.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know, I mean, for me, I mean, I don't, I wonder if we could also, within that sort of same suite, have an option there around the airport. And the pitch that I would make for that is that, you know, airport uses are not easily transportable to any other areas in the district, and I know that it's something that the, has been requested in the past by some of the operators there, and I'm just wondering if there might be a way for us just to take a look at that and have some options. Obviously, council would have to agree with that, but I just think it might be time for us to really, you know, start, start dealing with that, 'cause in my view, it's just, it's really, you can't put, you can't put anywhere else in the district. It'd be fine if there was other alternatives, but I'd maybe look at how that would work in firm, in terms of a, you know, liability perspective, and, you know, how appropriate, you know, those very details, but just getting to that point.
Maybe clarify, because I think, maybe I'm wrong, the airport, they could do something, but they have to do their own geotechnical and mitigation individually.
Yeah, I think that is.
So it's not simply they just can't build, it's just too costly for them to do, because they have to actually, and subdivision do, but they actually have, actually have to do their own mitigation on their own property or on their own lease, something like that.
Yes, it is complicated in that area. I think we can certainly look into that as part of this process. And like most of these, you know, these are just one-liners. It'll be, we'll have to dive in much more into detail when it comes to the actual process of updating the zoning ballot, so that is a really good point. I know we have more information now about what's in the airport than what we used to have, and so maybe there is an opportunity to have another look at what's allowed.
I think we have some updated language in the OCP, based on, we've had meetings internally about, you know, what can we do on the airport, and tried to take it as far as was appropriate, given the, and we've had specific qualified professional opinions on what can be done there, and so I think we've taken the policy in the OCP as far as we were comfortable at that point, the staff, I think appropriate, so that we could bring forward some information.
Maybe it just needs, first step is aligning the OCP. Second step is, in the absence of a mitigation structure, what could we do if you were. Doug, Ted, I can't remember what's up here.
Yeah, that was close to my point, because at the COM Dev Committee meeting, I think there was going to be an application of carbon engineering. We didn't get into it, because there's an issue with the OCP that we're currently in the middle of, but I think it's not specifically zoning, I don't think, if I understand it correctly, but it is policy around what might be constructed out of the Chikai fan, absent some mitigation structure like today. And whether there are some areas that existing studies have identified as not subject to flows, in other words, they're white on the map instead of colored. And the other is whether we want to draw a distinction between residential and industrial or commercial. And other things that I've been familiar with, there's always been a distinction about uses here, where people aren't living overnight, kind of sleeping overnight versus, and it's just, there's a variety of different examples of that. So I think we couldn't go into it the last time, because there's an issue with tonight's meeting, really. But for me, that's a priority to identify. That's not strictly, I guess, the zoning bylaw, but it's certainly just a priority to try to come to grips with that, which I think will solve some of the questions we've had around.
Anyone disagree with that?
Only because, well, I got my hand to speak.
Go ahead, give your comment.
You know, until the Chikai fan burn is determined around the airport, I mean, it's been looked at 10 times, nobody's gonna do anything. You can't get insurance, you can't do anything until they adopt a document that says that that burn is gonna do what it does.
Absolutely correct. Is it?
Um, no, we are, that item, the carbon engineering item, is coming back next week, I believe, on the, on the agenda, so maybe that will shed a little more light on the like, the level of information that we have on the hazard. And that's always, that's always been a bit of a gap. You know, our mapping for hazard, hazard mapping is outdated. There's some new mapping around, but it's sort of draft. So we're, I think there may be an opportunity in the near future to get more information on the hazard.
So I, it sounds like council generally wants to figure this out without judging the Chikai fan development and the re- burn barrier, and now that we have more information, we can get there, so let's hold that off until next week.
Susan.
So without, so I agree with Doug's assessment of having exemption commercial in any area from those hazard zones. We do it in the downtown flood hazard areas. We allow commercial on ground floor without flood construction level. And I think in terms of all the comments the council has made, I'm in agreement with, but we also have the opportunity to apply long-term leasing. We've only been doing short-term leasing at the airport, and there is no place to put it, so we need to have a long-term lease so they can get financing to actually do things. Is there a reason, maybe Doug?
There is.
Okay. Can we hold off on that conversation? We're gonna see the Chikai fan thing next week. We can talk a little bit about just the cognizant of time and how much work is generally to go through, and then staff needs to take everything and bring it over to the 55, so we don't have an extended amount of time today, is what I'm saying. But I don't, we won't lose sight of that, 'cause it's, it sounds like it's a high interest to council, so. And we were on secondary suites. I don't know how we got on. Airport!
Yeah.
I always change.
That's okay.
Took a flyer.
Secondary suites, anything else on secondary suites?
Oh, just one thing.
Yeah.
It's required garages below secondary suites to include vehicle access. I was in someone's secondary suite just the other day, and they didn't have a carport in there, and I didn't realize that you couldn't have a carport. But what they did have in there was their home office, and the base would work really well.
Yeah, no.
So, so that's a question. So currently, we have a size limit for, for secondary suites, and what does sometimes happen is that the ground floor, which is intended to be a garage, then gets converted to space, and it doubles the size of the secondary suite, and so, you know.
Ted knows nothing about that.
Nothing about that. So, so the question, you know, if, if council wants to hold that, that size limit for secondary suites, then the intention of this item is to make sure that, at the very least, that there is a door and an access for a car to go into that, that lower area of the structure that is supposed to be a carriage house. You know, it's a different question if we're, you know, we wanna extend the size of secondary suites and carriage houses could be larger, that, that would be a different item. This one, we're just trying to say, hey, right now, we're seeing that these carriage houses are supposed to have garages in the bottom, and, you know, it, there isn't a requirement that actually a car could get in there. So we wanna say, well, at least.
The law just thought that sometimes you want, you know, we talk about home-based businesses and commercial in residential neighborhoods and missing middle, sometimes if the carriage house is on a corner facing over onto the road, the opportunity for a little office in there, or a hairdressing studio, or yoga studio, or, you know, as a home-based business, I thought it was really a good use as opposed to a problem.
Can I just respond to that? Yeah, and so if that's something that council is interested in, to increase the sizes of secondary suites, because that would then become habitable space, or increase the range of uses that are permitted in those structures, then that's something, yeah, then that's something that we should talk about.
I haven't heard, although I've cut a list, so, but I haven't heard council saying we wanna make bigger carriage homes. We just wanna have different uses potentially in carriage houses.
Right.
Be able to consider that. That's, that's what I put so far. It might change.
That'd be really crazy, 'cause we don't allow bathrooms on the, in the garages, so that, we do allow, do we allow bathrooms on the ground floor now? I don't think so.
Not below the flood construction.
Flood construction.
Below FCL, yeah.
So it would have to be outside of the flood construction level on a secondary suite. So all of downtown wouldn't be able to have any secondary use. But it's interesting to think about whether you have a garage door or a regular door, if you're gonna allow that use, it's another flood construction issue. You're forcing people onto five meters of cement with useless space except for a car downstairs, and the lot may have inadequate parking. So all your stuff's down there anyways, 'cause you can't live in the upstairs, 'cause it's too small.
Okay.
But like, why not? Toilets in the downstairs, everybody else does it near flood construction.
So I think council's interested in not just, not just having garages down below, and so it sounds like we'd like to come back with some considerations for some policy on that, and we could extend it to.
Electrical bathrooms.
Jason and Karen.
I'm gonna respectfully disagree with that approach. I think that, to me, you know, I want to be able to have this, we have this available in all of our residential zoning, and I think if we start really allowing a whole bunch of other things happening in it, that, that will cause a lot of unintended issues. And I, the number one thing, though, is that it will have a huge impact on the affordability, which to me is actually the main priority for allowing secondary suites and carriage houses. And so keeping the square footage small is definitely a very specific way to keep that in that affordable range, so I, I like this stuff as well.
I, well, no, I think council is saying, don't make the footprint bigger. Staff was saying, we could consider making the footprint bigger.
Well, this is on the garage thing, though, right? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sorry. When I say bigger, I mean, currently, the, the space, the interior space on the garage floor is not considered part of the secondary suite, right? It's, it's not part of that 70 square meters. And if we start using it for other things like office, then we're going to talk about including that secondary suite, then becomes double the size from 70 square to 140 square, if that becomes habitable space, and garage is the non-habitable space that we allow on the, on the floor.
This is a much bigger conversation to get done here.
I don't care if we discuss it or not.
I think that it should have access for a car. Whether people use it for a car is their business, but I believe to provide flexibility for all future owners and people living in there, there should be access for a car. I mean, heck, everyone in my strata has access for two cars, most don't use it, but, but the concept is good, so I think it should have, allow access for a car.
So we're not deciding anything here. Bylaws are gonna come back for consideration, we can debate the crap out of them, and decide where it goes.
The one issue that I just realized, it may not be on this list.
It is, but it wasn't in high, but I was actually gonna bring it up, it's moving up.
Okay, well, I'll pass on to you then.
Are we moving on from secondary suite?
Uh, shh. Do you want garbage on secondary suites?
Uh, no, not garbage on secondary, commercial. Is that it?
Well, why don't we go?
It's, we passed it already.
Okay, yeah, so go ahead.
So we passed, where is it?
Waste management.
Yeah, in the waste management, we currently, I'm not sure if it's already in the bylaw, but making sure that commercial owners have lawful space and recycling, like, that all commercial owners in all areas have an area for commercial, separate three units, to make sure that they, in, in any business licensing, that there is garbage included in that, some of the older buildings.
Yeah, apparently you just have a multi-room, multifamily, I should say.
Yeah.
But these more, these office slash commercial spaces that are coming forward, there should be considerations of waste management in that as well.
So, so are you saying commercial should have a inside waste management area, or just somewhere on the property?
A lot will waste, somewhere on the, it doesn't matter, as long as this lot will bear the waste area adequate.
Yeah. Okay. Let's move on. Any ones on secondary suites? Yeah, Jonas?
Just, just hearing from Gary, and, and I agree that this is probably enough for us to chew on.
We have more work than we can do with what we've got through so far.
Yeah, I know.
And we, and we won't be able to get all this done by September.
This was the last high priority one, Gary, at the chair of the meeting, thank you. And council, anything on the remaining list that is, that council is considered a high
Yeah, I have one to add. I don't have counsel.
I'll ask you second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Matt. Council's thinking.
In the initial cut here, Airbnb or short-term rental was lower down the list, but some staff review identified that it should have been higher, and so that's one that I just wanted to highlight, that should have probably been in the high priority list, some kind of regulatory structure for.
Anyone in council disagree?
Jason.
The prohibiting of water sale, commercial extraction, I mean, isn't that fairly straightforward? It's like, we should have a one-liner on that.
Yeah, that, I was gonna go there, I was gonna go there next. Are there any of these that are lower, moderate, that are just easy?
Quite a few, a lot of them are, as they go down, they do get easier, yeah. There are a bunch of them are easy, but there's a lot of.
So if there's easy language changes, I think we should just, you know, within reasons, just consider doing them. Yeah.
It just, the, the volume of items is quite large, and so we can certainly choose ones that are easy, but to, if, to get all of them done, even if they are easy, that even easy ones tend to take a fair bit of, you know, careful consideration to make sure you don't have ripple effects through the zoning bylaw, so we can certainly do what can, but it might not be easy.
We hear your qualifier.
Yeah.
I guess I'm wondering which of the high we could implement, or pieces of the ones that are rated as high. I mean, this was supposed to be a conversation about priorities. I don't think anyone disagreed with the ones that you ranked with high, but we still don't have anything about what we would like to see prior to the end of our term that's realistic. So what's realistic?
Is, is getting all the high ones done realistic by us all?
I don't think so.
Well, we could do, I think, the best, now that we confirm that these are high priorities for council. these are high priorities for council, we could go back, we have a little bit more information from you on some of the nuances. Um, we could go back and come back in the near future with, here's the things that we can do by September.
Or maybe, uh, council, are there any on the high that you'd consider not needing done by the end of this term? Jason?
Energy efficiency. I think that, I mean, because we have already the new, the new step code and all that happening, so that might be something we could wait. I mean, not saying a long time, but I don't know, I don't know.
There's some of those things in there like, uh, electric vehicle charging and that I think should be done sooner or later, but do we need the thermal energy systems? Maybe not. Um.
And even the density bonus, like, I feel like that's a good policy, but maybe we can wait on that too.
Well, on the density bonusing one, we're gonna be requiring all multifamily to have a plugin for everybody anyway. Yeah, so.
And, and when the step code comes in, it takes care of some of the reasons anyway.
I think that if there's anything in the high list that requires consultation, we're not gonna get it done before September. Because once we head into summer, it's not really fair. We hear that all the time from citizens is that, you know, they didn't know about it or they couldn't be here because it's December. So what I'd be looking for is, um, the things that, you know, many of these have multiple items on them and things that, like wording changes, like committing vehicle charging and alternative any production in most and all zones, that's, that's up to us. That's a wording change, we can do it. So those are the kinds of things that I'd like to see done prior to September because we don't need to do a whole bunch of engagement. The ones, like aligning to the OCP and subway planning, creating new zones, anything, university zoning, like, anything like that that will require quite a bit of engagement, I don't think that that's really realistically on our plates. And if we, if we try and do too much, all we do is delay those other higher priority ones. It just moves the timeline out because we're trying to break it into little chunks. So for me, it's like, what are the simple things that we can do, like a, one of our omnibus zoning updates that don't, doesn't take a lot of, um, work, but hits some of our key things around secondary suites, bike transportation, limited space and missing middle. So that are in our strategic plan.
Can we clarify a statement that Karen said? If, 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 um, something takes some public consultation, can, can we get some done in May, June and September and bring it back in October? Like, I'm just trying to understand it. That's a, a correct statement that if it has public consultation, we won't get it done by October.
Probably if it's a quite contentious item that requires consultation, it's unlikely, it's not likely possible. Of course, anything we do, we would do an open house and have opting for people to check in. So, but there, there are, there's gonna be a scale of, um, how, um, how much, uh, challenge there will be or, um, how contentious things will be and how easy it is to do. And so we could, I think, as staff, we could pick the ones that are not too contentious, require a low level of engagement, but provide us some wins in our priority areas, that, that identify priority areas, and bring those back to council and say, here's a set from the high priority.
These will take more comprehensive public engagement. We like them, we'll get them done. Here's some that might take a little bit of, we can possibly get them done. Okay. And you'll bring that sort of analysis back.
We can bring that back.
Um, Jason and Ted?
Um, I was just gonna say, as far as the university zoning, I, I don't know, I wouldn't expect to do too much consultation on that. Like, because to me, and that, that zoning, like, that doubling the plan is, it just needs to be sort of finished and re, rejaked to fit the reality. Um, I mean, I don't, I don't know, because I am concerned that we're just gonna get, I think, more so than even the other RS ones that we talked about. Those are the spots where we're most likely to have applications coming through immediately. And from what I've seen in the previous, uh, like, previous applications that have come forward in that one, um, there was a lot to be desired as far as it wasn't really needing the standards that we're already applying pretty much everywhere else in the community. So I would pitch that we actually, you know, put that near the top, in my view, because I think that will have one of the biggest impacts.
University.
Yeah. And, you know, we do know that the university is very, you know, intent on ramping things up on their, on their development and their partners, all that jazz. So I could pitch that that's probably one of the top ones.
Ted, what do you think?
Yeah, I would agree that that would be the top one for me. The other one would be all the areas that you wanna pause. All the moderate stuff, I don't see any of really the moderate stuff being, being, you know, ground shaking. If we get to it, we do. If we don't, you, obviously you're not gonna get to that list. You know, when you turn the page, well, you know, now we're really not gonna get to it. And so that, a lot of that stuff's gotta be the next bunch. But the university, I think, is something that's been going for a long time without council ever really having a look at it. I mean, I know in my seven years here, I've never looked at it. So, you know, in, in a council setting and discussed it. So, so it would be university and the pause areas. Then anything else on top of that.
Susan? Okay, so the commercial activities as well, um, the outdoor storage specified areas, I didn't really, I just didn't really understand that. Um, it's in moderate, but, uh, you just went through an entire reason why personal services and everything should not be there in commercial services. And I agree with that in the business park as well. But all of these housekeeping, commercial activities actually does the opposite. So I'd like just, if we're gonna have a discussion about the business park, I'd like housekeeping, commercial activities to be included in that discussion before anything moves forward. Because it has to be comprehensive. You can't just like go, okay, well, now somebody's complained about this, we have to include that now, but we're not gonna include. So, uh, if we're gonna have a comprehensive business park plan, we can't be just adding single uses to the, to the zoning, uh, without a full comprehensive discussion. Because it has, if you want to include, be in the light industry, you can't include, uh, personal services. Those are two completely opposing things that, uh, yeah, you can't have February weekends next to that. Well, you can, but you're gonna get complaints.
Just to clarify, that was in the commercial zones, but a lot of business parks, like industrial.
That's a different zone.
In a broader range of commercial zone, you're permitting personal service staff which can change the broader range of commercial.
Yeah, commercial versus industrial.
Which is.
There's commercial uses in industrial zones. So I think they were just talking about commercial zones and related to what's good in there.
But there's also business parking, prohibited outdoor storage and stuff like that. There's a business park. I think all of those have to come with comprehensive usage zoning.
Great, yeah.
And I would like the health activity, without saying it out loud, to be a priority that should have been done.
I thought you'd already done that.
And I'm not gonna say it out loud because I don't want flyers from Ontario.
That may be.
I thought that one was already done.
Okay, I may need to look into that one. Let me take a look.
I thought we had done that like two years ago.
Health.
The only other one, and maybe I need more clarification on it, is the open space one. And we've, we've been tripped up by this one a lot, I feel. Um, and, um, we're not getting the open space in multifamily, for example. We're not getting those comprehensive place spaces for families within our zones. And, um, so I, I feel like that open space one has tripped us up a bunch and we should get that done.
Okay, hi.
And I'm not sure that will take a massive amount of consultation. Um, yeah.
It, it is one that may be quite contentious with the development community because its obvious impact on, on, you know, getting to the cost.
We need to build livable multifamily and we're not.
Not arguing against that, just saying that they're.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that conversation we had with the development.
Yep.
And I think, like, when I say contentious, I'm more worried about muted contention and people with that bottom line issue on their.
Yes. Um, one other one, add parking requirements for childcare facility. Needs to be, uh, we want walkable childcare facilities. So having requirements that are unachievable for childcare facilities, uh, is gonna be a barrier for entry for childcare. So if it's a parking space or two, I don't wanna see every childcare facility that has to go in asking for parking leniency because they are putting a childcare facility that we've added eight spaces in residential use. Yeah.
Three forty-five.
What?
Three fifteen it was supposed to say.
Okay, uh, we will suspend this meeting. That's three minutes past, so no worries. We're gonna have, open discussion meeting with your motion about the agenda. Discussion meeting moved by Jason, seconded by Ted, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. We're back in a period.
Just to that point, may I respond? Hi, it's just that, um, childcare facility isn't listed as a use at all in our parking requirement. So there is no parking requirement. And maybe we want low parking requirements, but it's just not addressed.
Okay. I don't want it to be a barrier.
Of course, yeah.
So, so I think, um, we're looking for staff to come back with the ones that we've set high, categorize them. These are gonna take a lot of public consultation, we won't get them done. We don't wanna rush them. We can get these done, they might take a little bit of public consultation, or this might take more, but it's really important to get done. And then these ones, actually fairly easy. And even the low and the moderate, if there's real easy ones that really are just corrections, that we include those ones as well. Is that fair enough?
Yep.
Is that fair enough, council? Okay. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Linda, did we wanna go through this list?
Yeah, um, Mary Monson, um, if you look at your printout, and I'm not gonna pull it up on the screen because I understand IT is coming.
Shortly.
To take the laptop. Um, based on our conversation, or the conversation with council last time, we talked about priorities. What I've done is taken the list that council provided and put them at the top. So there are seven priorities that council absolutely wants to see done by, um, the end of the term. Now, that doesn't mean to say that things below will not get completed. What this does do is obviously help us focus as time goes on and if the scope of things changes. Um, the zoning bylaw, obviously, number one is what we were just discussing with staff. Staff will come back with a further refinement of what council discussed today. Um, and then there's the following six. I don't know if you want me to go into them in detail or really just looking for confirmation from council that I captured, what we discussed last time.
Any disagreeing with council? So it, we, everything's been worked on, we're just making sure we get this in the sound by the end of the term. Uh, I, I was thinking about this on the weekend. Um, actually, I'm not agreeing with that. It would be a big distraction. We'll, we'll talk to them again. Everyone okay with that? Karen?
I know we budgeted for an evacuation plan. And I'm just wondering, which, there's the, it's not the wildfire section plan. Multimodular evacuation plan. Okay, so it is gonna get done by the end.
Oh, yeah. Okay, um. Susan?
Sorry, just that food vending is a high priority for you this summer. Good night? Location's reportable for food vending.
I think that's all. Oh, that, we're, we're past that list. Um, they're gonna come back with, if it's low on, if it's grown this thing.
Would you like to bring that up, please?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, um, the easy, low stuff, they're gonna bring back it for consideration in the, something considered for the end of the term. Um, okay, um, we're done. Motion to terminate the meeting. Moved by Jason, seconded by Ted, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.